This conference will now be recorded.
Charles, you got one minute?
That's what I'm doing. Applications.
A curtain mark, yes.
We like.
I do not feel like today. Yeah. Slow down.
Listen, Mike.
It's 5:30. All the meeting to order.
Commissioner Gengler?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Filman?
Here.
Stand and join us in prayer. Your agents.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you so much for the time that we can gather together. We thank you for the great citizens, make up our community, and we pray that you bless each one, helps them with whatever struggles they're going through. Thank you for our commission, each one of them willing to serve. I pray that you bless them as they consider things tonight. Thank you for our first responders, for fire and for police. I pray that you bless them, keep them safe, give them wisdom in what they do, and I pray that you be with our city workers. We thank you again for the time we have together. Pray that you be profitable and you'd bless it. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As patients or relations to the agenda?
Mayor, we do not.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as written. Second.
Second, we approve the agenda as written. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. Ready for recognition of visitors to stay.
Can I read that one?
Pardon?
Introduce and swear a new police officer, Shanice Herrick. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So I have the pleasure of introducing a brand new police officer to you. Shanice Herrick began employment with us on March 6th, 2023. She successfully completed all the rigorous phases of the hiring process with us. Officer Herrick has been employed as a full-time police officer in New Kirk, Oklahoma, since 2019 before starting with us. She completed a total of 561 hours of training in 2020, when she completed the Council on Law Enforcement, Education, and Training in Oklahoma. She has maintained continuing education hours since her graduation. Shanice was recently engaged to be married to current ACFD firefighter Ames McIntosh. During the interview process, Officer Herrick was asked to describe characteristics of good police officer. Shanice said that good police officers have integrity and are honest. She added that she firmly believes in community policing and being a good public servant. We're very excited to welcome Officer Herrick to our family at the Ark City Police Department. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to administer the oath of office.
Hi. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
Hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
State of Kansas.
The state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And me. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
That's all I have for right now. Thank you, Geng.
Presentation of the VFW Post in the state of Kansas, Officer of their Year Award, Sergeant Mike Esquero. Also recognized Master of Police Officer Ivan Velasquez and Assistant County Attorney Christian Heesel for being nominated for the award.
I'm gonna face the crowd.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm Charlie Ravens. I'm VFW Post Commander here in Ark City, plus the third district commander for the VFW in southeast Kansas. With me is State Commander VFW Jim Ratcliffe, past State Commander Michael Holland, also of our post. He's also the quarterback of our post. This is junior vice of our post, Rick Wagner, and we're just thrilled to be here. Usually, I will send in one nomination for Officer of the Year. But I got three this year and I couldn't decide. So I sent to the state chairman and he picked the Officer of the Year. We have a certificate of appreciation for all three of them. And the first one I'd like to do is Mr. Basil. There it is. We will be awarding him a certificate of appreciation plus $20 off for a meal at the VFW.
All right.
Congratulations. Now, let me read a little bit what was sent in today. For right here. Mr. Basil joined the Cali County Attorney's Office in 2020. Mr. Basil graduated from Kansas State University with a Bachelor of Science in Social Sciences. He then attended the University of Colorado, receiving his Master of Public Administration, and lastly, completed law school at Charleston School of Law, receiving his Juris Doctor, Bank of Queen Law. Since his time in the county attorney's office, Christian has excelled as a prosecutor. He has built trust and support from law enforcement officers and agency in Cali County. In 2022 alone, Christian has been the lead prosecutor in approximately 558 cases, which have been filed. Mr. Basil is responsible for prosecution, law cases in the south end of Cali County. He is responsible for all traffic, misdemeanor, and felony cases presented to the Ark City District Court. Of the cases filed in which he is responsible, 194 are felony criminal cases and another seven felony traffic. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Anyway, we appreciate you. Next nomination, nominee for Officer of the Year, Master of Police Officer Ivan Velasquez.
He is not here.
He's not here. FBO Ivan Velasquez started the police department in 2016 and was assigned to his ninth second shift. FBO Ivan Velasquez has been an officer that has been relied on heavily on, relied heavily on. He has, still continues to cover options, but occasionally working numerous hours of overtime to help. FBO Velasquez discovered over 144 hours of vacation in six days this year for officers to take off. That's part of it. Now. Did you give that to someone? We will. You don't give to chief person.
Chief.
Chief's up here.
Thank you.
Officer of the Year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Just reading one state, right?
No, all that's state.
This is all state.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I got, I got a call from the state chairman. He says, well, Michael won the state officer of the year. He said, but I can't pronounce his last name. We've decided his name is Jones. I'm gonna read a little bit about this. Far as I know, this is the only second time Ark City has won Officer of the Year in the state of Arkansas. Kelsey Hornik won it, what, two years ago, three years ago? Yeah. Okay. FBO Esquero?
Esquero.
Esquero, all right. Was hired at the Ark City Police Department on October 14th, 2019. FBO Esquero has done nothing but excel here at the police department. During this past year, FBO Esquero has held many hats at the police department. At the beginning of 2022, FBO Esquero was assigned to the day's second shift, day two shift. FBO was recognized for his ability to cover several shifts several times in 2022. He even offered to switch his schedule to go for days to nights with short notice. He has also stepped up and been there when needed. There's a whole long, and I will, you wish, you will. Just, let's get him to cover. Yeah. No, that's. I put it in. I added that to it. Not to present that. Okay. Congratulations. For you to have it. This is the thing right here. You hold that up and I will read this. Okay. This is the certificate to the company to acknowledge State Police Officer of the Year. And it states, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, VFW National Law Award, awarded the Master Patrol Officer Michael Esquero. 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 In recognition and sincere appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the Arkansas City Police Department. During Michael's Esquero, his astounding career, he has maintained a record of highly professional and exemplary service to the community and the nation. His extraordinary commitment clearly illustrates the proud core values and traditions of law enforcement profession, further highlighted by the degree of admiration and respect of his peers and the local public he serves. Master Patrol Officer Michael Esquero is clearly an exceptional example of all who wear the badge. This honor reflects proud ideals and high standards of veterans of foreign wars. In witness whereof, we have unto set our hands as official seal, the Veterans of the Foreign Wars of the United States. Signed, VFW National Commander in Chief Tim Foreman, VFW National Attorney General Dan West. The work is a service itself. Thank you for having us here. Thank you, Police Department. It's not Arkansas, it's a police department.
That's everything you do.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
I'll say one more. Have an open. Get up here. You don't mind? Get up here. Michael, I can only say. Get up here. Be in the middle.
There we go.
A band of honor.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, thank you.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. All right, we're there.
Wanted my guy to run this. Be hidden. Next year. Dominating?
No. They have to, I think, police have to. I think police have to. It's just exceptional.
Every day I have to stay as long as I can. Good idea.
On the consent agenda, we have approved the March 7th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. It's written, an approval from the Orange License for Dollar General located at Forum West Madison.
I'll make a motion. We approve it because consent agenda is read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.
Business and ordinance adopting the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Future Plan Use Maps for the city of Arkansas City, incorporating such plans and maps by reference pursuant to KSA 12-741, KSA, and a bunch of other KSA references, has that? I'll let you take that.
Mayor and Commissioner, we approached this last meeting, so I don't have a whole lot to add, but I'm here for any questions that you might have for us.
Questions?
The last time we did this was, what, 13? 13. So we do about, what, every seven, 10 years?
Yeah, that's kind of the target.
Yeah.
I would probably try to do it again somewhere around 20, 30 or so, something like that.
And in this plan, we got some short-term goals and medium-term and long-term goals, which I like. It was really, I think we complimented you last time. It's really done real well. And you guys spent a lot of time and hard work on that plan. That being said, I'm gonna make a motion. We approve the plan.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, though.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Filman?
Yes.
Thank you for you guys. All right, Josh.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the reschedule of a public meeting for a body from 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 4th to 5:30 PM on Thursday, April 6th.
So as you recall, the Stand Up for Real America Forum is on Fourth and Fifth in Mulvane, and I think most of you had indicated you'd like to go, so that's in the middle of a commission meeting night, so that would be the reason for it, so.
Do you hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There we change our meeting from the Fourth to the Sixth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.
And ordinance accepting the application of KSA 41-719C to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor as designated area of Wilson Park from noon to 10 PM during Arcoala, Tacoala, sorry about that, on May 6th, 2023.
Filman, Commissioner Rogers, Gengler, Warren, and Jennings. I'm Jill Hunter with Visit Ark City, but today I'm representing the Tacoala Committee. We're seeking approval for Gypsy Beverage Company to sell beer and liquor during the hours of 12 PM to 10 PM at the annual festival. The service area will be secluded, and it will be monitored. Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, we set up just like it was last year? And you've already talked to police about it?
Yes.
Okay.
We've turned in the maps that were last year. It'll be set up almost exactly the same unless, they made some changes at the park, but those were made last year too, so.
Basically, it's all gonna be on the cement right there, that big cement.
The alcohol?
Yeah.
No, it's in the, it's between the rotunda. Yeah, between the rotunda and that, in that area. And I turned in a map with my paperwork showing what it was, but.
It's kind of like the old tennis courts.
Yeah.
Where it's in the food trucks used to be kind of butted up in that.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, that's what I meant.
It's not on concrete, but it is on ground. It's a grassy area.
Okay.
Just between the rotunda and there and throw it down. You see Beverage Company? I believe she lives in Winfield. We've struggled getting people locally that want to do it, and she has a stock trailer that has a kind of bar area on it, and she can keep all of her ingredients inside the stock trailer and wait on people. She's been at other festivals that some of us have attended and seems to be very professional.
So it's basically margaritas or?
Beer and liquor is what she'll serve.
Okay. Wasn't there a margarita lady last year there at the Tacoala or?
Last year, we used the Arcoala people. They ran it and they had drinks that they did, but they weren't interested in doing it. They didn't find that they made enough to make it worth their while with the stuff that they had to do to make it happen. The fees and stuff wasn't worthwhile, I think. We did approach them. I gave them first shot at it, and they turned it down before we went to another avenue.
Motion.
I'd like motion. We, the application of the KSA in 41-719 to allow the sale of consumption of alcohol and liquor at a designated area at Wilson Park from 12 PM to, or 12 PM to 10 PM during the Arcoala, May 6th, 2023.
Tacoala, but I'll second your motion. Tacoala.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Roll call.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Sure.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Filman?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. A resolution authorizing the city to enter into an engineering design services agreement with Smith and Oaks for the sanitary sewer extension serving plans, KLAVNDS Venture Truck Stop Development Project for an amount not to exceed $45,900.
So the project is moving forward now. They're, they were, they're supposed to be in town this week to talk to some local contractors about dirt work and those types of things. And some of the plans of grading plans and stuff are starting to come this direction. So it's time for us to, on the design portion of the sewer for that area out there. So that's what this is about.
Hey, we, we're gonna have to underneath the rail tracks, won't we?
Yeah.
Have we haven't contacted the rail company yet or?
No, I visited with Chris Minin about that yesterday, and we'll, we'll get those applications in here ASAP, get that, that piece going.
But they're pretty slow about what they do, aren't they? I mean, real slow.
Yeah, we talked about that. So he felt like between a month and two months, we could get, get that process going. It's, since it's a simple project, but.
And then we'll have to get an easement going across for the new owners of the greenhouse.
So I have a meeting tomorrow with Dr. Ballard on the school, and Nick met with the new owners of the Ark City Greenhouse yesterday, and we'll meet with them again next week. And so, and then the other properties are city-owned and county, and.
Yeah.
They both, well, I hope the city won't be cooperative. I think the county will do from my conversations with Lucas, so.
Rob, make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an engineering design service agreement with Smiths and Oaks, Arkansas City, Kansas, for the sanitary sewer extension serving clans Venture Truck Stop Development Project for an amount not to exceed $45,900.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
It's been a long time getting here, so.
Yes, it has. Obstacles.
Yeah, I'm glad to see we're moving forward now.
Further discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.
Next item, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contact with, contract with JEO Consulting Group to begin levy certification phase one for an amount not to exceed $56,910.
So this is the first phase of our levy certification. There'll be several other phases after this. We probably won't have to do much construction and those types of things because our levy is fairly new. But this is kind of the first phase where we're just really kind of getting a preliminary view of the, of the levy and the elevations and things like that, so. And this kind of works in conjunction with the FEMA remapping that's going on as well, so. So this, this kind of, it'll be a process that we'll be looking at for, for the next year or so, so.
Is this a budget item?
Yes, it is. Yeah, we've known, we've known it's been coming for a while, so.
Only to do insurance-wise, do this every?
So we do inspections, the.
Have inspections.
Inspects every year. And so this is a little different. This is recertification of the levy with, basically through FEMA. This isn't.
Now, do we have to, do they measure how high that levy's supposed to be?
For an inch low, we have to put an inch of dirt on the top and all that sort of stuff?
Yeah, so based upon the new floodplain elevations and those types of things that that could change.
That hadn't been surveyed yet, has it?
No, that's still in process now, so.
Well, that'd be, well, this happened right after this, I mean, sometime this year.
It's kind of working all together. So they should, I think, my understanding is some of the initial floodplain stuff should be worked out, you know, in the next several months, so. Some of the preliminary items are, so then there's a process with that too. They, they'll have their drafts, and then they'll, there'll be public input on that. And so it'll probably be several years before that's actually, you know, set in stone on the new floodplain maps, but that's, this all works together with it.
How much money have we got pulled back for this? I mean.
Well, originally, we, we don't have the full amount. Originally, we were budgeting about $350,000 for this process, so this, so we got, we had this amount.
$350,000.
Yeah, well, not the full $350,000. That was some things we were looking at in our rates that we might have to look at. But, but this process, this process will go over a period of several years, so.
We'd probably need to make sure we put money in every year because, you know, they don't have much going to cost later on, you know?
Yeah, now we, so that initial dollar, I'm not really sure where that dollar amount came from. That was a number that was floating around when I came. But now with, now that we've kind of got the process started, we'll be able to have a lot better idea where we're at on that number when we're doing budgets. And we'll, you know, we'll be starting our budget here this year for '24. And so we'll, we'll have a good idea what we'll need to put in for that, you know, for '24 and on forward, so.
Okay. With that being said, I make motion, resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a contract with JEO Consulting Group to begin the levy certification phase one for an amount not to exceed $56,910.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I got one more question on it. At JEO Consulting, we just had one firm that did all this, or we had several, or?
Yeah, we, so we talked to PEC in Wichita, and then we also, there was a, gosh, can you name the firm now? That we worked with and was, he used to work here as an engineer for the city. He's working for that firm now, which.
Oh, M.A.K. or M.E.K. or? Probably Squier.
Yeah, I guess, right. So, but we kind of did more of a qualifications, and this firm was really a lot better to kind of walk us through, because none of us had been through a levy certification before. And they made it up the understanding of it, the process of it a lot easier for us to understand and, and help us kind of walk through the, the process more than the other firms did, so.
Okay. Sorry.
Any further discussion? If not, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Consider approval of city insurance coverage for property liability vehicles and equipment.
So we got the renewal for EMC, and that renews April 1st. Last year, the policy was $304,889. This year, the renewal is $346,000. There's two primary reasons that, for the increase. The first one's commercial property, as we've all seen our tax evaluations come in here the last several weeks, that we know property values have gone up and construction costs over the last couple of years have gone up a lot. And so as, our, our policies are for replacement of, of property. And so if this building were to blow down or burn down, to replace it would be, you know, quite a bit more than this year than it would have been three or four years back. So that's why we're seeing a big, you know, a frigging increase, about $22,000 in premium for. about twenty-two thousand dollars in premium for the, for the year on the property. And then the other bigger increase is in, in auto. And we've replaced a lot of vehicles the last two years with new vehicles. And so we're seeing a little bit of increase in our, I don't know, bit of bill coverage with that. Everything else was, was pretty flat. Those were the two big increases.
Motion guys.
EMC is really kind of still the premier company for municipal.
Well, we don't have very many choices, you know, because there's only one or two companies, just those municipalities, isn't that right?
Yeah. We, Travelers is, is an offering. And of course, United looks at those types of choices for us when they and at this point, they didn't really see anything that was an option for us. The other one is, it's kind of a, it's a pool. It's Midwest Public Risk. It's in Kansas City area. There's, I think Winfield uses them. There's some other cities that use them. But we'll probably next year, it's been a few years since we've bid it out insurance. We'll probably look at that. But EMC usually is kind of the best.
Well, you know, if it's within, it's pretty close, you know, we always want to stay local, have the local people, so.
But I guess what I'm hearing is that the increases are due to factors beyond our control. Our, I assume that our, our instances of, of having claims on our insurance are either flat or declining or something.
Yeah, there's nothing significant on that. Of course, there's always little things here and there, but nothing significant. And, and like I say, the most of the, the two, the two big increase causes are the property and, and those vehicles. Everything else is fairly flat.
Well, I think overall the city maintains equipment, you know, pretty good and they're careful about how they use the equipment. You know, we don't have no losses or damages where they roll over a truck, all that's, that's.
Well, no doubt, I'm just saying, but for the example, that huge chunk with commercial property suggests, but we're insured at replacement costs. Is that correct? And not some, we're not going to, they're not going to say, well, we set the value five years ago and that's what we're going to pay out. We're gonna, yeah. So if, if we did have the storm that came and damaged City Hall beyond repair, that the insurer would provide funds to rebuild City Hall. You know, like the six million dollar man, you know, faster, stronger.
Yeah, and all of those things. Okay, thank you, sir.
Motion.
I make a motion, we approve the city insurance carriage of property liability vehicles and equipment.
I'll second.
Been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, see to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carried.
But not used.
An ordinance authorizing the operation of worksite vehicles, micro utility trucks, all terrain vehicles and special purpose vehicles on city streets within the corporate limits of the city of Arkansas City fighting for related matters, including penalty violation thereof. This is Arkansas City.
Good evening again. So this has kind of been a long time coming. We've kind of worked through some, some things to hopefully come up with a good offer to the commission on this. So the standard traffic ordinance that governs our traffic within the city currently prohibits people from operating golf carts, all terrain vehicles, side by side, like work type vehicles and micro utility trucks. And so it is written within the law that the city can actually authorize those things to be operated on the streets. So what I have for you, and hopefully you've all had a chance to review what I've provided to you, is a proposal for an ordinance that allows for worksite utility vehicles and micro utility trucks to be operated within the city. And the way this is going to work is that someone would basically make application to the city of Arkansas City. That application would come to the police department. At that time, we would look at the paperwork that's provided. We would contact that person, conduct an inspection on the vehicle that they would like to be able to operate on the streets. As long as it meets the criteria that's set out in the ordinance and also in state statute for especially safety considerations, we would then charge a flat rate of twenty-five dollars for registration for the
One time only?
One time only. And at that point, we would affix some type of sticker or tag to the back of the vehicle, recognizing it. We would collect all the pertinent data about that particular vehicle, including current proof of insurance for the vehicle. And then move forward from there. The consideration that, that I looked at, especially for golf carts, is, and it's probably going to be a change to, to the information that you have right now, is that all terrain vehicles and golf carts are both going to fall under a category of special event requests. So for special events like Arcoala, Last Run, maybe even Taco Lala, someone can make application to utilize either an all terrain vehicle or a golf cart for those purposes, mainly on closed streets and roadways. So at this point, what I would like to do is at least offer to the commission to try this for a period of about one year to evaluate, number one, safety as we move forward with the worksite utility vehicles and the micro utility trucks at this time. Do you have, do you have any questions?
I got a question. Like people out in I X L in that area where they gotta come to town, they gotta come on seventy-seven. And basically you can't drive on seventy-seven, is that right or?
That is correct.
How are they gonna get in town?
That, that's a good question. I think that they're gonna have to cross that bridge, so to speak, pun intended.
Well, I mean, we're not gonna be waiting on them and writing them tickets.
No, absolutely. And that's out of our jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, you know, you, you're talking about Kansas Highway Patrol and the county sheriff's office has jurisdiction in that area. What we'll be concerned about is operation within the city.
Once we get to city limits, we're fine, but getting there, you know, could be the county or the
It's up to them.
Okay.
It's, it's basically at the risk of the operator.
Okay, this is short distance.
We can't give them permission to operate on the highway in violation of any state statute. But what we can govern is what happens within the city limits of our city.
But they can cross it, right?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, they can cross, but
Yes, yes. So U S seventy-seven bypass, I did write that into the ordinance, traveling on U S seventy-seven bypass, but they can cross. They're probably at Chestnut and at Madison.
Okay. The other question, you know, of course, I know the golf carts are kind of out, I don't see them driving down Main Street, but somewhere down the road, meanwhile, I look at neighborhood, you know, areas, but maybe work on this first and then have you give us more time, take a look at, you know, the golf courses close to the golf course and that kind of stuff, you know? And I, 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 I think there's, as long as they don't come to town, I think it's safe.
I don't think golf carts should be allowed
No.
in on Summit. And I think that's what Mike was trying, was trying to say a few weeks ago when it said I didn't want them anywhere, but I just didn't want them on Summit. I think around golf courses, you have people that live right across the street from a golf course. They're gonna want to drive it across Country Club Road. They're gonna want to drive it down Lord Road or whatever. So they're on Chestnut, they live further Chestnut to, they can't cut across.
It is a goal of this particular project to give current updates on, on how it's going with the way that the ordinance is, is written now. So in the future, we can definitely look to see what we want to do, maybe with golf carts. And in my, in my mind, those are neighborhood related type vehicles. So we definitely wouldn't want them, you know, traveling to Walmart and
No. Neighborhood, the neighborhood right here, close, you know?
Yeah.
So are we, is I, maybe a K dot issue? Can we put, so you mentioned Madison, you mentioned Chestnut. Can we, can we put signage designating that those are acceptable, you know, passages across the U S, actually, it's no longer the bypass, it is U S seventy-seven. But those are acceptable passages across that so that we minimize the I didn't know. So I think I can do the miracle round out here on Kansas Avenue and, or, or, or through the river, over the river and through the woods or whatever.
But I think that you can avoid K dot by placing those signs a little further down the road.
Back from, okay.
Back from the road.
But, 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 but could, could we, I don't know if that was part of the, could we have just, so we're designating if you're going to cross that traffic way, these are the places that you can go. You don't see the sign, you don't come across.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. That, that should be possible.
And I probably zoned out a little bit again. Do we, you did kind of talk about the I didn't process, you know?
Yeah.
Let's look at this. If it becomes, we, we on Friday talk, expressed concerns about about this being something that becomes too manpower intense or exhaustive on our law enforcement officers. And if that, if we have a problem with non-compliances, a high rate of non-compliances, that might be something that we want to when we roll it out, say this, look, if you guys don't follow the rules, we're gonna, we'll just as opposed to, as opposed to giving the perception that it's, we changed the law and that's it. And then we have a lot of heartache, but it's like, if you guys respect what we're trying to do and what we're trying to offer, we're meeting you halfway or maybe a little more than that, please, you know, be in compliance, work, be in compliance.
Yeah. And I think the other consideration with just doing that conditional year period is that we can evaluate safety. So again, I think safety is paramount when it comes to this. And I don't so much worry about those operating the worksite utility vehicles and the micro utility trucks. It's the other drivers.
Yeah.
Basically recognizing them and yielding to them. And, and so that's, that's what I worry about. And, and I will make a point to come back and report to the commission on developments on, on how that is coming along.
So when they get their tag, will you have to order the tags and you'll have them here?
Yes.
So, and then where will they get their twenty, pay their twenty-five dollars then?
Right over in the water department.
Okay.
And the, the actual application form will be available at the clerk's office, which is similar to the same process that we use for special events. They stop in and fill out that form for special events. And on that note, since we're going to add the ability to have golf carts and A T Vs on that special event, we'll look at that, adding that to the special event form itself.
We already have an ordinance, I think, that the micro utility trucks, because they are already legal. So our, I want to ask Larry, do we have to make that off the books or this ordinance superseded or?
As Chief mentioned, the S T Os disallow everything. We do have, you're right. Somewhere along the line, micro utility trucks did get in there with similarly worded language that he has used. So, and that's by amendment. So I, I think we have a pattern here we could follow. It's just, it reads that section code fifty-eight twenty-six amends the S T O code regarding, in this case, micro utility, utility trucks. And we could just write another one says regarding whatever, each, each one by itself. And that would, would just be an amendment of the S T O, you know, that we do.
But this she'll, she'll stay, she'll have to pay the twenty-five dollars.
Right, no, she's just asking how we, how would citizens know where it's at? How would we do this legally?
Trying to get, you know, not to have to pay because she's already in, she's already legal in the city with it already, isn't that right?
Miss them for a good five years at least, so.
I don't think that's a legal decision. I think that's a policy decision.
Very responsive.
There you go. Like that and buck right back, right?
So I would probably also relay that I'm probably just gonna need a little extra time to be able to build the forms and work out that process and making it available at the city clerk's office.
So if we pass this, how soon will they be able to do that? Sixty days, ninety days or?
I would say possibly by May first.
May first.
I should be able to get the city approved tags and a form built by that time.
What day did you say?
May first.
Can't push it any earlier?
I was sitting there thinking.
I can generate tags. I do that, but at this point, I would have to reach out to a vendor to be able to print those tags to be able to identify the vehicles.
I was sitting there putting my chest out thinking, hey, he thinks we can get something done that quick.
I was thinking, I was thinking, that's fast.
So this is kind of silly, but the funding part of it, will it come from the city or the police? I mean, how's that funding? It'll be, we buying the tags and all that?
It'll, it'll come out of the police budget, probably your general fund, but we're not, I don't think we're talking about a great deal of money.
For the tags?
Yeah, I can't imagine, man.
That's what we're gonna collect, what are we gonna do with it?
I'm sorry.
The money we're gonna collect for these tags, what are we gonna do with it?
It will go back in the general fund.
I, and I, I would not anticipate there to be a big
Shift in that.
Yeah, a big, a big amount of money coming on that.
They're, they're gonna wanna know where the money's going if they're gonna pay it. So is there anyone from the audience who wants to speak on this?
Yeah, Ken Herter. I wanted to ask the chief, don't run off there. He didn't mention age limit on driver. And is there, oh, I'm sorry. Wanted to ask the chief for age limit because I read in the paper and you didn't mention it soon. And the fine, if there's a fine, my grandson's really concerned about that. The other thing, you mentioned worksite vehicles. Would you identify what worksite vehicles are? And the reason I'm asking, my grandson has a side by side. Is that considered all terrain? Or does that fall within worksite vehicles?
It's probably gonna be under worksite vehicles.
The side by sides?
The specifics, the, the actual specifications on the vehicle.
Okay, I'll tell him.
Driver's license, they have to have a, they have to have a valid unrestricted driver's license. And then I believe anyone under eighteen has to order home. Is that right? Is that different?
That's different, but unrestricted, yeah, unrestricted driver.
So he's seventeen and he's got a valid license. He's good. Thank you, chief.
I have a question. What about the nighttime, I mean, is there a time that, because of lighting?
Right, so the vehicles that we're talking about approving have to have adequate lighting that are, that sit by stacking. So yeah, when we have those conversations about golf carts at some point, that's a summarized.
Yeah, that's my concern. Sorry.
I have a question. Is that because the golf carts, you know, what about the golf, if they have?
They got a seatbelt, they have their seatbelts and everything else, yeah, so.
Just ask.
Turbo charge. There's turbo charge too.
Anyone else?
No, I do know. I've sent this to a few of, some families that go out to other cities and they go visit and they take their side by sides to Colorado, Utah, Nevada, they have cities that they use it and they read through it and they felt like it was pretty. I didn't have anyone say anything bad about what's in front of them, so.
Yeah.
I think they felt pretty straightforward on kind of some of the ordinances, so.
I would just say this, that, that the chief, the chief's writing here has been, it, it appeared to me as, as lenient as state law allows.
Yeah.
There you have subsection one and two that just reference statutes.
One of them just said, you're right. He said, as long as the police have something in there for them to enforce it. And this is one of the guys who goes there where he goes, you definitely want to have some. So they felt pretty straightforward about it, so.
And I sent it out too and came back with, yeah, it looked good.
Sure work.
That being said, Scotty, you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize or authorize the operation of worksite utility vehicles, micro utility trucks, all terrain vehicles and special purpose vehicles on the city streets within the corporate limits of the city. on the city streets within the corporate limits of the city of Arc Kansas, providing for related matters, including penalties for violation thereof to the city of Arc Kansas City. Is that it? I think that's the motion. Is that, am I reading the one that's right? Yeah. I'm just kidding. I don't know whether, yeah, does that sound right? No, say again.
And then second, is there any further discussion? Same one? It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gannon? Yes. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spelman?
Yes.
Next item, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a bid submitted by Aquasizer's Pool Company of Wichita, purchase two pumps and strainers for Paris Pool for an amount not to exceed $1,340.
Mayor, members of the commission. This item is normally a budgeted, just a regular line item, but due to the cost, that's gone up substantially. We had to send this out. The information I gave you last week was only half correct. Because of the warranty, it came with some contingency on it. They have to install it. Otherwise, I wouldn't have went this way. But in order to get the three-year warranty, this company has to install it. Because it is, we're not able to locate the old motors that went with the pumps. So the pumps we are getting are ceramic pumps with the new motor on it. So in order to get the three-year warranty, we have to allow them to install it the first year.
So you'll pull out the old pumps then or?
Yes, yes. We do have to pull out the old pumps as well. It's obsolete equipment.
Okay.
And I was thinking back, I can't even remember when we installed them. But we were able to always get those motors from B and B Electric, but now they've gone obsolete. So Aquasizer is a company we deal with. Debbie at the pool gets a lot of this chlorine from them now. And a lot of the pool amenity stuff, like basket strainers and hoses and, you know, the ropes and little floaties for everything there. They gave us a pretty good deal on it. I feel very confident in them installing the pool stuff. They were there for the slides from the beginning. So we've worked with them for several years and Debbie holds them accountable for everything they do. So I'm okay with this, but I do regret misinforming you on the pumps themselves because I had no intentions of them installing it when we could do it ourselves. But for that matter.
The games you gotta play to get your warranty.
Exactly.
I understand. We'll get three years of warranty, so let's get it.
Yes, so.
Make sure it breaks at two years in.
For that, I just asked for your vote of confidence in them and hopefully we can proceed.
Did, we recently have some purchase where we have the option of, I think, maybe in your department of an extended warranty? Is there anything like that that's affordable or?
Not even an option at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion, we authorize the city of Arc Kansas City to accept a bid submitted by Aquasizer Pool, company of Wichita, Kansas, purchase two 10-horse T E F E C DQ pumps and strainers for the Paris Park Pool in an amount not to exceed $16,340.
Second.
And second, is there any further discussion?
We're gonna be operational this year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're just waiting on some better weather to get painted on there and then get these pools, the slides fixed and get that operational. And we'll go at it again for another year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion? You go, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Anyone from the commission have something they want to discuss?
I always sent this to, and I don't know how this guy gets the information, is UDisc about Disc Golf stats from Niebler Pond this last year of 2022. I guess it's an app they use, but it says that 469 rounds scored on UDisc. I guess that's an app, a UDisc app. So based off this app, they got this information, 469 rounds were scored, 160 UDisc players visited your course, 645 hours were on it, 71 players visited your course for the first time in 2022. You had the busiest month was April. May was your most busy month, 73 players visited your course from over 30 miles away, five players visited your course from over 150 miles away and five visited your course from over 300 plus miles away. The states were Kansas, Oklahoma, Minnesota, Alabama and South Carolina. So it's a pretty new course and I know city does a good job taking care of it. And I know there's some gentlemen that like to try to help fix it as they can, but that, they sent me that and I was kind of shocked that. I guess there's a UDisc app, I'm gonna have to find that now, but I thought those are pretty interesting stats for a course. And it's still, it's pretty packed there on those nice days if you drive by, so. It's kind of a tough course, I've played it once.
That must be like bowling where it's registered, you get on there and register.
Yeah, but download the UDisc app, I haven't.
Yeah.
So.
That's pretty cool.
But that was pretty interesting that that course has that much attraction, so. So I had.
Yeah, I have, we've visited this a couple of times, but. These are different courts throughout municipal courts. So if we want to look at expanding and having a second court date or a second time or some sort of E-court or where they email or Zoom or something that would allow people who can't make the specific accessible court time. I know they, they give them as much leniency as they can and they, but if we would look at it just based on the volume. So we did population, cases filed and the meeting time. So you can see a lot of them have multiple court dates, but it's just something for us to think about. We're in a new process and so just something to think about. If we're interested in looking at it. I've had a couple of people contact me and say, you know, that's a really bad time. You guys need to add another one. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. At our meeting on Friday, when Cox came, I've got a report back from her that she's working on your stuff that you asked her to take care of and she will be getting back with you.
Cox?
Yes.
Yeah.
And she'll be getting back with you in a week, she said.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, this, this was your, okay, I got mine on Friday.
Okay.
Like, you know, early Christmas, so, but yeah, we, we did do that. We would be, I think it's mostly a communications issue for, for sake with somebody's cops, what, you know? But functionally, I heard from a number of folks. Fortunately, I didn't write down everybody's name when they did share their information or experience with me. But in terms of, sorry, I guess I have a theme because we talked about insurance and I'm always a little bit put out with the notion that insurance can creep up even, you know, by factors that we don't have control over, you know? And then when we need them, then we collect on the claim and they go up again.
Because she had a claim.
And, and so it's the same thing with this issue of people pay for the service and then they have a problem with the service. This is in no way related to the massive service outage that they experienced a couple of weeks ago. This is just over time. And I had several people who said they were reluctant or, you know, to call for services. It's kind of crazy, we're paying for it, but if they have a problem, because there is this matrix that they use that says based on what they decide is the problem, they either take care of it because it's their equipment or they charge the customer for having to take care of it and repair. And people don't know, you know, so you don't want to get a $75 bill or a $100 charge added to your monthly bill when you didn't get it. So actually what I did and we're working through right now is a little bit of probably better communications with folks when they go out on a call, whether or not, you know, it's something that they want a technician to do. Because if a technician does it, there's a fee associated with it. If it's something that the customer, homeowner, resident can do, they need to explain, you know, you can do this for free or you can ask us to do it and it will cost you extra. But that's communication, so we're working through that because people who buy Cox won't Cox cable or internet. Anyway, that's, that's, that was the context of that. I wouldn't, I didn't want to be cryptic with what we were talking about. But we do appreciate the, what was your name?
Megan.
Megan coming down, government relations.
She's the, the government, basically the director of government relations.
Yes, government relations coming down and spending some time and trying to talk through the nuances of how they manage that, but functionally it's kind of incumbent. I'm just gonna put, if anybody's listening, like I say at church, if anybody's listening, you probably want to ask if you have to have them come for service and always, is something I can do? And they do have support that will help you with the nuts and bolts of that before you let the technician do it and end up with sticker shock.
Anything? If not, we'll have comments from the audience this time?
Yeah, somebody?
Were you signed up?
These are the right center.
What can I do? Couldn't share that with them, please? And I think you guys are all, actually, hello, my name is Landon West, Arc City here. On behalf of the Arc Kansas City Recreation Commission, thank you for allowing me up here, Mayor Spielman and commissioners. Just kind of wanted to bring this to public light. I know it's been an ongoing survey for the past couple of weeks, but no more opportunity than to get it in front of people and, and allow questions and push it out there to the community. There's four taxing entities here at the bottom of this page, one of those being the city of Arc Kansas City, Calley College, Arc Kansas City Recreation Commission and the school district USD 470. For a number of months, we've been working together to try to kind of create a plan or guide a vision for our community in effort to benefit everyone. We all know as that top line kind of says, thinking together, working together, we're going to be better together. Knowing that each of us as entities can only do so much individually, but what can be possible if we all join together and make something grand? Utilizing those tax dollars to bring them together. Nobody likes increases. I know it's been mentioned on, on valuations and things that have come out. So we need to be of the utmost awareness of what's going to happen to those tax dollars and, and to our citizens. And the survey that's out there right now will be open until noon on Friday. There is a QR code at the bottom of this page where somebody with a smartphone could go ahead and scan that. It'll direct them to it. It's a very simple 16-question survey. I'm hoping that you guys have had an opportunity to go through that. I know through communications, we've tried to hit it out on social media, trying to get it out in front of everybody. Obviously, when people think of surveys, it's kind of one of those things that they don't love to do. There is open-ended opportunity to answer in there. There's also some, you know, bulleted answers that people can provide back, but it's a starting point. And that starting point will create a direction and an avenue for these entities to continue to work together. I'd be lying if I, if I didn't say I was super excited that some of these entities, being as grand as they are, have the interest to work together. I think we're at a point in our community that just screams opportunity. If you think about our census data, our trends in population, people are leaving Arc City. They need something to keep them here and we need something that will bring those individuals into our community to keep them here. And that's what this group is looking to do, trying to create infrastructure, trying to create opportunity. And if I could just have you guys share that, if you guys have a place of business, put it up. If you haven't taken it, please take the time to do that. Again, it's a 16-question, very simple survey. Just ask that you guys take the time, take the time to, to complete that. And I appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to come speak tonight. Sorry, I wasn't on the, the written agenda, I was just popping in. But again, thank you and all of us do as well that are a part of these organizations down there below. So please complete that before noon on Friday. And for everybody in the audience, I will give a flyer or two as well, so thank you.
I filled it out, I got an email this afternoon.
With another.
With another link to, yeah.
Push it out there.
It is definitely out there, so.
Good, so thank you guys and with no questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just love to have your guys' support in doing that, so.
Thanks, Landon.
Relevant to the governing body, I heard tonight to see if there was any questions with this letter of support. But you haven't got to read it yet, so I'll come back again. I did want to update you on the progress of the planned celebration. We're in the works of contacting around 300,000 to 400,000 people, inviting them to Arc Kansas City. We're gonna have a reenactment of the run. And I was looking for the governing body here to put a couple of volunteers up because on the initial run, two people took off before the, before the starting line and they got shot dead. But I didn't know if you could come up with a couple of volunteers off this governing body for that part of the reenactment? Or maybe the city manager or the city attorney, whichever one you want to put up, we'd be glad to have out there. I've got a commitment on that date. What date is it? September 16th, I'll mark something down. All right. I did want to give you an idea about how we are contacting. There's 62 villages, cities and boroughs inside the Cherokee Outlet, which was a part of this run in 1893. And this is an example, I'll read this to you, of a letter that I have sent out. "The consortium is, consortium is reaching out to all people, towns, et cetera, in the area known as the Cherokee Outlet. We're planning a 130 years anniversary land run celebration for September 16th, 2023, here in Arc Kansas City, Kansas. Our desire is to include Westport, this is the town that this was addressed to, and our depiction of the original run. Our letterhead depicts the memorial wall and statue, which is our intention to construct on land near the historical McCooy Line, south of Arc Kansas City, Kansas. We hope you will join us in energizing people in your, your community to participate in this historic event." And there's several hundred thousand people in, in that outlet now with Oklahoma. We also have, if you'll look at the Kansas, State of Kansas Tourism website, we are on the top of the list and will be there for 24 months. And as far as the celebration itself, it will be there at the top of the list for six months unless I extend it and all. And that Kansas website is put out to the world, so on Google. So we can see the, my intentions are to bring 100,000 people to Arc Kansas City. That's my goal. If I get 10% of that, we've done a hell of a job, well, okay. But I think I really feel strongly that we can do this. But think again about those two people on a run. This is a depiction of the shirts showing the memorial wall that we plan to build and all. And right here is the city of Arc Kansas City, right on the front of that shirt. If y'all would, would, and we haven't known where we're at with the support thing here yet, but if, if y'all would consider at some point having this furnished for the employees of the city of Arc Kansas City, we've all got to get behind this thing, it's needed. This memorial wall, if you'll look on the top 10 tourist attractions in the state of Kansas, Arc Kansas City doesn't even strike a bell. But with this memorial wall, I think we can be in that top 10 as a city and an organization. So with that being said, I'll, if you have any questions, call me at any time. So with that being said, I'll, if you have any questions, call me at any time about what the plans are. But we are a visit Ark City and the chamber is working hand in hand with this deal, which is very appreciated.
Question, Russell, on your memorial thing that, you know, the grant, you hadn't applied for yet, are you going to try to apply for that grant?
No.
So how, how are you going to raise the money?
I'm going to contact all these people. There was, that outlet was 58 miles deep and 100 miles long. And so there would be 5,800 sections. And four tracts were taken up in each section. So that'd be a couple hundred thousand people. I'm requesting that they pay $2,000 for the stones that I've developed and, and put on the wall that I'm planning to make. The concrete alone to hold that wall is going to be over a hundred thousand dollars in just labor delay. So it's a three or four million dollar project. But there's for, according to what I've read, there's 42,000 people that took tracts of land. I, I can do the math better than that, there had to be more than that. But anyway, 42,000 people at $1,000 a stone, that's 42 million dollars. So somewhere in there, I'm going to hit and get that thing done.
Yeah.
Let them pay for it. And I have, I have had a lot of response thus far, not 42,000 people worth, but enough. I only need to sell 600 stones in order to get that memorial done. And I've already been in contact with the sculptor, which laid this out and about to put some more money with him to make a replica of what he's planning on building. And then from then on, the money gets thicker. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
I'll come back again if I need to for the, see where we're at with this letter of support.
Okay. Yeah, Shannon's working on that, so.
Will you show the shirts to the audience? Show your shirts to the audience? She wanted to see the shirt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Trying to get these volunteers up here. And I don't get shot. And you might move back in front of the camera here for online viewers. All right.
And Russell did tell me that you can have your own logos put on the front of that shirt.
Yeah, you can, you can have your business's logo. A big, a big part of my motivation is to bring tourism to Arkansas City, help these downtown businesses and everything that are struggling and, and working. They're working hard at their daisies, just like we all do, to, to make something here in town. And I'm a sixth generation Arkansas Cityan. Hillary Clinton, one of the things she did say that makes sense was it takes the community to raise a child. I feel like this community raised me, I want to give something back to.
There you go.
Everybody see that, all right? Lee advertising is making the, making the shirts. And they're also selling them too. So I think the chamber's going to, some of the other businesses are going to, so that's my feeling.
Thanks, Russell.
Okay. Well, first of all, she doesn't want a big deal made about it, so, but I, I cannot let the meeting go without mentioning that, but you know, this is his last meeting. How many years have you served this city, Leslie?
Twenty-seven.
Wow. And I, and I know all of us lean on her experience and knowledge of things that have happened on the past, so I know, we've talked about it. We're going to miss it, so, but.
Hopefully she's a phone call away, if you need her.
She may not answer. But I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, publicly thanked her for her service and all that she's done. So I'm going to miss you.
Going to be something special for her?
I think we got a little.
Monday in the, in this room. Two to four. It'll be announced here soon.
We're sure we don't miss it.
Yeah, tomorrow.
And then you want to introduce your replacement?
Yes.
I know she met some of you.
And so we split out the city clerk and the municipal court. This just kind of makes sense to get a little bit more specialized helper. And so this is Barbara Cooper. You can just say hi. She is going to be our new municipal clerk. And she started last week and she's doing a phenomenal job.
Fantastic. Welcome.
So then I'll start with some reminders. Obviously, we just rescheduled the meeting for April, so. Just remind everybody that we have the Stand Up For Rural America Conference. I did, I did reserve two tables, so there's, that's 10 seats. And so if you guys could let me know whichever you want to attend, then I obviously have some staff that would like to go to. And if we have any extra seats, I'll open it up to maybe some folks from Visit Ark City or the Chamber, make sure that we fill those tables up, so. And again, that's the fourth and fifth. And I don't, if any, it's, it is in Mulvane at the casino, so I don't know if anybody wants to spend the night there or not, so let me know. If not, we can try back, so just let me know on that. Another opportunity is, is the very next day, it's another, this is by the Kansas Sampler Foundation. It's a big rural brainstorm, it's in Lindesburg, so it's from 9:30 to 3:30. I don't know if any of you have been to some of the sampler programs with their, they're, they're pretty good on tourism and things. So that's, that's available if anybody interested in that. Again, it's the sixth, so. And then remind you again, on the rise, Cali, the health at the forefront meeting, that's at Wednesday, the 12th, at from one to four out of four counties. And that's going to talk about, you know, how decisions, housing, employment, education, transportation, and then you said other things affect health. So things that, that would maybe affect the way you, the policies that you. Then a couple of projects going on, the, the traffic light at Kansas and, and see, you want to kind of update them on that? Yeah.
When we went to radar system and we wanted to enter the left turn lane. The gentleman that came down, I gave him my bid, we looked at the cabinet, he wasn't aware that my board on there is too small. We need six slots and the one in there only has four. And there's not much room in the cabinet, so you can't just plug in another board, you got to buy a whole nother cabinet to add the left turn lane. Now, the radar system that's up now is functioning, functioning properly and quite well. We had no issues in the rain this morning, we've had no issues with sunlight, it's recognizing traffic left and right and putting them through. So that's helping with the flow quite a bit. But in order to complete the turn lane before next school session, I will need to upgrade the cabinet. And with that, it's, I'm guessing anywhere between 10 and 12, maybe even $15,000. But I wasn't aware, because I wasn't familiar with the radar system itself, it's brand new to us. But he wasn't aware either. He's a salesman, so. He knows how to sell the radar, but he didn't know all the components that needed to be in the cabinet. And when the techs came down to install everything, we couldn't get the turn lane on. But the traffic head is functional halfway.
So are we going to go ahead and order it or? Yeah, Tony.
I'm just waiting for school to be over because, you know, that's going to be a very long process to take the cabinet out, rewire everything and then put it back up.
Will we do it internally or?
We will do most of it internally.
They probably have.
We'll have to go out to get through the cabinet itself and just depends on the knowledge of whoever's coming to install it, how much radar knowledge they have. I'm, I'm pretty much leaning towards going back with the company that installed the radar, because they also install cabinets as well, but they know their system quite well.
Yeah, and when you talked about the salesperson, I thought about the episode of Seinfeld where he says, anybody can take the reservations, it's holding the reservations. Everybody can say the stuff, but it's how do we put it in? I know the box that you're talking about, I believe is on the north, excuse me, yeah, the northeast corner of the intersection. And that one sits about three feet above the ground, but that's also like the collector area for where all the pedestrian students walking home.
Yes.
How much bigger will that cabinet be and will it become like a, an attractive nuisance for the kids to want to hang on and bang on and things like that or?
It kind of depends on the model we get. Some of them, if we upgrade, we have to go to a pedestal type which sits on the ground.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Or we can get one with an offset that'll wrap it around the corner more towards away from the sidewalk. Because that was one of my concerns when we were talking to the techs about it. Said, we can't go bigger because we'll impede the sidewalks.
That, thank you, that, that was.
Have an offset version of it and they do say it will come, it's possible to get one with it.
That's the observation concern I had and I should have known that you'd already thought through that. Thank you for that response.
I just wanted to make sure you guys knew why, because we said in the paper, it would be a left turn signal. The alley project over here is starting to kind of gel now. You know, we talked last week about their last meeting about the gas line being too shallow and lower it. Well, as they were trenching the, for the sewer lines, the Cox cable conduit wasn't glued together. And as that stuff would sag down, the joints would come apart and the cable would come out and they were fighting it out like crazy, so. They, they got through that, the, the first block is done and they've got the dirt, they're compacting the dirt now, they're going to put some rock on it. Kind of get it passable for now, they'll go to the next block and then when that's finished, then they'll come in through the concrete. But, so that's why I said when it was slower than what we'd hoped, but it's still moving. Out the wastewater treatment plant, we had a meeting this morning on progress and things are, you know, it's kind of still like they were, they're working on the clarifier and the digester right now. And the UV, the, the, does the sanitation of the, of the effluent, some of that stuff's starting to roll in, some of it's still out there away. So they're thinking probably mid-July at the worst case scenario when they can get that finished up, so hopefully sooner, but that's kind of the worst case we're looking at. And then speaking of the digester, you know, we had to clean out both those. The original quote to, to clean out both digesters was $118,239. And it's going to be about $259,000 because they ran into a lot of issues cleaning those out. So I just want to kind of pre-warn you that that's going to be coming, but.
We're under budgeted a little bit.
Yeah, we're still, we still have some, some funds in there, so we're still good, so. But just, it's just one of those deals till they get it all, they just don't know what was going on underneath all that.
Well, he told us that they wouldn't know until they were tore into it. I mean, they gave us warning on that deal.
And the bridge, we're still in the same place on the bridge, waiting for materials to come in, same thing with mass and overlay, we're waiting to get on the schedule. Water wells, so we had a, that, one of the water wells, number three was, we had to shut it down because it wasn't pumping enough. And so Rod had a company come in and it's an old well that has the concrete screens. And they came in last week and they cleaned it with acid three times and got it all up and going again. Looks like magnesium is the issue, it's drawing that in and clogging up the screens. And then he said there's two other wells that they're going to need to clean right away too, they're starting to clog up and that's well 14 and well six, so. I guess the static level came up three foot on, on well three when they got it cleaned, so it was pretty.
They reserve there.
Yeah. And then as Mayor mentioned, Megan had got back with me as also, and, and then on the Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi thing that you guys talked about, we're going to get together in April and talk about that some more and see what we can do there. And then the last thing, the financials in your packet, I did want to point out that the wastewater fund, if you look at that. We've been waiting on some reimbursement from the wastewater treatment plant loan. We had to do a fiscal stability, a sustainability plan for KDHE and to, in order to, at a certain point in the pro, progress of the project. And so we've got that turned in and like everything else up there at KDHE, it's going slow. Daniel has reached out to them and, and they are going to release those funds. So we'll be seeing about $1.7 million hitting the bank this week, we've plunged the dollars that we've put out. So that's why the wastewater treatment funds are, are low, we've been waiting on the reimbursement, so I'm going to point that out to you, so. That's all I have for that.
I miss our, I miss our advocates because I'm trying to acclimate them to the notion of using passion. You know, to call for service, to become advocates of municipality and doing what the other levels of government. We're right here, so we can't hide from them, but we'd love it if put together some of their research and say, get on the phone and call our legislative folks and our congressional folks and say, can you guys do stuff to help us run cities better and more affordably? You know, that would be cool.
Not that I'm trying to prolong the meeting or anything.
I just wanted to really share some outstanding news with the commission. So as you guys know, I am also the chairperson for the Suicide Prevention of Cali County Coalition. And we recently put in for a grant through the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services. We were awarded $35,000.
Wow.
To expand the peer-to-peer suicide prevention program Hope Squad in our county. So currently, Hope Squad works in Ark City High School, Ark City Middle School and Cali College, along with Winfield High School. We've identified schools in the north end of the county, Udall, Burton Dexter, Southwestern College and for Winfield Middle School to do the expansion of that program at those locations. So that'll bring our, our total number of squads within Cali County to nine. And that's really kind of a big deal because first, we were, we were actually the first in Kansas to bring that type of program here. There's not a lot of suicide prevention programs that are currently working within schools throughout the state of Kansas. So for the state of Kansas to recognize the work that we're doing down here in Cali County is outstanding. So we'll be working, obviously, within the next couple of months to obviously get out in front of school boards and, and staff and those kind of things and help stand up those programs up in the north end of the county. But I, I figured that I'd take this opportunity just to share that information with you, that we are making a difference. I know many of you attended the data walk that was put on by the Legacy Foundation and the one in four number of students who have made a plan to die by suicide, sixth, eighth, 10th and 12th graders. That is a number that we should all be paying attention to. And I think that with a program like Hope Squad working within our schools and especially with as broad as we're going to be able to sweep through our county, we're going to be able to see that number dwindle over time. So thank you so much.
Good job. Awesome.
Does anybody else have anything?
I'll make motion adjourned.
Second.
Second, we adjourned, all the favors say aye.